Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Monday, December 7th Board of Education meeting. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on December 3rd, 2015 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Gillett?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Ms. Swanson? And Mr. Kent. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmoud. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, correspondence is as listed on our agenda, and I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. It's my pleasure tonight to spend a little time spotlighting the great work that our students do each and every day. Every month, we invite groups of students on down representing different schools, presenting different discipline areas. Tonight, we're going to be focusing in on athletics. Our athletic director is here tonight, Mr. Mike Finisi, who's going to talk about our cross-country team, both boys and girls, as well as our gymnastics team. Mr. Finisi.
Good evening, Vice President Haley, Board of Ed members, Dr. Schiff, and Central Office Administration. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to showcase our student athletes and their accomplishments this evening. Before I introduce our fall champions, I would like to read some statistics about the athletic department, as I do every year. Last year, we had 490 fall, 310 winter, and 445 spring athletes participated in our athletic teams. They participated in 474 home events and 605 away events with 685 buses. We had 85 all-conference selections and 47 all-state selections. Last year, our athletic program won three state, four county, five conference championships. We also won six swimming individual and relay events at the meet of champions. I'd like to read those off since we never had an opportunity to acknowledge those teams as well, since our spot for athletics is always in December, so... Last year, our gymnastics team were central two sectional champions. Our girls' cross-country team were group four champions. Boys' basketball were group four central jersey champions. Our individual champions for swimming, our meet of champs swimming, 100 butterfly champion, Juliana Parker. Our meet of champions, girls' swimming 200 individual medley champion, Megan Bull. Meet of champions, girls' swimming 200 medley relay champions, Alexandra Temple, Megan Bull, Juliana Parker, Deborah Stoddard. Our meet of champions, boys' swimming 400 relay champions, Samuel Hendricks, Ryan Morgan, Daniel Sanders, Bradley Zadryk. Our meet of champions, boys' swimming 200 free champion, Bradley Zadryk. And our meet of champions, boys' swimming 100 free champion, Bradley Zadryk. Our gymnastics team also won the 2014 county championship, our girls', as well as girls' cross-country, boys' swimming, and baseball. Our conference championships were football, gymnastics, boys' swimming, girls' swimming, and softball. As you can see, it was a pretty busy year for our athletic programs there. Since 2003, Hillsborough athletes have won 36 state, 63 county, and 77 conference championships. They have also won 19 individual or relay titles as well. We currently have 106 former Hillsborough athletes playing in college and another 42 committed this year. This brings us to this year's fall accomplishments and honoring these fine student athletes over here. First, I'd like to bring up our 2015 Somerset County Champions, our boys' cross-country team, Coach Eric Rosenthal. Come on up, boys. If you guys will come and stand over here, please. It's always difficult this time of year, but I'm glad that the young men and coach came out this evening. Also, I'd like to bring up Brandon Tubby. Brandon, you're over there, right? This is kind of, this is a Hillsborough Raider story, and Brandon's going to laugh when I tell it, but we've laughed about this in the past. If you can remember Brandon as a middle school athlete, and we've talked about this at his signing, he's going to be going to Northeastern University. Brandon was one of the back-end runners on our middle school cross-country team. And I see some head shaking, you probably know what I'm talking about. Well, if you know in true Raider fashion and with the work of Coach Rosenthal and team, Brandon Tubby, by the time he became a senior this year, number 12 in the state at the meet of champions. So, I thought that was a pretty incredible story and that everyone had to listen to in regards to that. He went from basically a back-of-the-end runner to one of the best in the state this year. So, congratulations to Brandon, congratulations to the boys' cross-country team on winning the county championship this year. It didn't look like it embarrassed Brandon too much, so that's good. I'd like to bring up our girls' cross-country team and Coach Rich Reefee. Come on, ladies, you can come up, too. Similar to the boys', the girls', the boys' cross-country team, they put many, many miles on those legs, probably more than a lot of us drive in a week, they put on on their legs. These young ladies won the Somerset County championship this year and the NJSI Group Four Central championship as well. They went to the meet of champions, and they finished number two at the meet of champions and are ranked number two in the state. They also finished fifth in the Eastern Regionals for a national. So, congratulations, ladies, on another great season. Next up, gymnastics, I'd like to bring up Coach Beth Murn and the gymnastics team. As I always say, my gymnastics girls are probably the toughest kids in the school. Just wanted to say that, with all the injuries and the trainers that they're with. But Coach Murn and the gymnastics program, they were 2015 Skyline Conference Champions, 2015 Somerset County Champions, and 2015 NJSI Central Two Champions. They also completed undefeated season, and the only time they were ever beaten was at the meet of champs. And they took fourth at the meet of champs and are the number-two public school rated in the state. In closing, it is always nice to acknowledge championships, but as I referred to earlier, 490 fall, 310 winter, and 445 spring athletes dedicated themselves with their coaches to a six-day-a-week commitment per season and were still able to keep up their strong academic standards. To me, this is an accomplishment for all of our athletes, and they are all champions. So, I just want to acknowledge all of our athletes for the hard work that they put in. So, thank you again for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you again to Mr. Finisi, our coaches, but most importantly, our student athletes for doing a great job. I'd like to ask the board at this time for a brief five-minute recess so the board has an opportunity to meet some of our student athletes and congratulate them.
Yeah, we're in recess. Okay, we are back from recess. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Ms. Haley. It's now my pleasure to share with the board, as well as the community, the 2015 Park results. We have a relatively brief PowerPoint that we'd like to share with you tonight. The board had an opportunity to have it earlier on today, but we will have time at the end of the presentation for Q and A from the board. So, some very important timelines for the community. We have received now all of the high school results, but we don't have three through eight results yet, the actual individual student, the individual student reports, the ISRs. We will be receiving them this week. This is what UPS has told us. So, once we get them, we're going to send out all of the information, the ISRs, plus a letter from Dr. Antounis, kind of going through the purpose, as well as how to read these results. Those will go out on December 15th, which I believe is next Tuesday. And by mid-January, after this presentation tonight, all building principals will be holding individual meetings with their community to answer any questions, address any concerns that the community has about the results. So, first of all, a little bit about what people will be getting back home. This is a snapshot of the top half of an individual student report. You can see behind me that this is done differently than the NJASK results. Ooh, it's not. I guess you're not going to see those results. Hold on a second. Let me see.
Can we act it out like charades? Oh, there you go.
Hey, there we go. Sorry about that. So, the NJASK results, as well as the HESPA results, are broken into three different categories, advanced proficient, proficient, and partially proficient. This evaluation is divided into five separate categories, level one through level five, one being the lowest, five being the highest. And a student will receive this information about either their math assessment and separately their language, their English Language Arts Assessment, or ELA. ELA is on the board here. This particular child scored in Level Three, which means that they are approaching grade level expectations. It also gives a school average so that the parent can determine whether or not they are above, at, or below other children in the school, as well as a district average, a state average, and finally, an average of other Park states. These are other states across our country that used Park during the 2015 administration. The parents will also get other information that's a little bit more granular about each of some sub-areas in both English Language Arts as well as mathematics. So, the five areas themselves, the lowest area, Level One, is not yet meeting grade level expectations. This is an area of students who we can identify as at risk, need additional help and support. Level Two is partially meeting grade level expectations. Certainly, we want to assist and support those students as well. Mostly, the balance of the students are in Level Three, approaching grade level expectations. And then Level Four and Five are either meeting or exceeding grade level expectations, the highest being, of course, exceeding grade level expectations. This is on a metric of about 650, I believe, to 850 is the highest score that one can achieve on the Park. There are a lot of resources that are available for parents to find out more information about the Park. The best place to go is a website called UnderstandingTheScore.org, which is a portal that's made available by Pearson and Company. This is the group that actually created the Park. There are areas that have little videos, information about how to read into the Park, and this hopefully parents will find helpful. This first year that we have the assessment, it is a new benchmark, it's a new starting point for all districts in the state of New Jersey to explore. We're going to be drilling down through this information from the district-level perspective, and then we can disaggregate, which means we kind of pull the data apart by disaggregated areas, including gender, race, ethnicity, children that are on free and reduced lunch, special education children, as well as kids that are receiving English language support, or kids whose first language is not English. This goes all the way down to an item analysis that can be done at the student level. One of the nice things about the Park is that we're able to actually look at individual items, as well as standards, to determine how well our students have performed in this So, this just goes through a little bit of the reasoning that the state of New Jersey had in terms of moving from the state assessments of NJASK, as well as the HESPA, into Park. Last year, of course, all students in the state of New Jersey did not take NJASK. Everyone took Park, and it's administered in grades three through 11 in English Language Arts. And mathematics is also grades three through 11, but the mathematics assessment is done grades three through eight, plus they have content-specific math results for students who took Algebra I. That's one assessment. Students who took geometry take a different assessment, and students who take Algebra III take a different assessment. So, a student in grade eight could actually be taking either the grade-eight math test or the Algebra I test or the geometry test. We actually have some kids taking that as well. So, this is a lot of data. This is actually Hillsborough's data. It's across all of the various levels across grades three through 11. There's a couple of things that I just wanted to point out to you before I actually show you a chart that allows us to digest this information. These are the count of the valid test scores that we have. We have around 550 or so kids, between 500 and 600, depending upon the grade level. I want you just to take a look at these scores, which are in the high 400s, mid-to-low 500s, and then all the way up to grade 10, 11, even grade eight, where we see significant drop-offs. This is a result of the test refusals that we had at the high school. We only had 286 valid tests at the high school, and as we're analyzing some of those, there may be tests in that group that do not reflect our students' best efforts, that they may not have taken it as seriously. So, 286 out of about five, I think that particular class is actually closer to 575, almost half of the students refuse to take the test. These are our results compared to the rest of the state of New Jersey. Our achievement is in the blue area, where the blue bars, the state is the red bars, and these are the percentage of students that are achieving a four or above, which means either meeting or exceeding standards. As you can see in Language Arts Literacy, in almost every area, with a couple of exceptions, Hillsborough Township Public Schools outperforms the state. The couple of areas where we don't, according to this, are areas where the refusal rate is high. So, we're actually questioning the validity and reliability of those data when we have a significant amount of our students that chose not to take that particular test. But in the areas that we have, especially in the lower elementary areas where we have a high participation rate and arguably a high focus rate, kids that actually took it very seriously, you can see, not surprisingly, our students continue to outperform the average students in the state of New Jersey. That was language arts, English Language Arts scores. These are our math scores. One thing that I do want you to take a look at and to kind of zoom in on is grade eight. Grade eight math, for us, we have almost half of our kids, maybe even a little bit more than a half of our kids, take algebra in eighth grade. So, these, this is a unique group of kids. These are the kids that aren't taking algebra or geometry as eighth graders, and we see actually that they're performing less well than the state average. Again, we have a higher percentage of kids that are actually taking advanced math than those throughout the state. Again, these numbers here look a little bit higher than the numbers down here, again reflecting a refusal rate that is relatively high at those grades. So, here's our math performance. Our math performance on the chart, for the most part, in almost all grades, are well above the state averages. Again, this is the same thing, but in mathematics, scoring at a four or five. Grade eight were lower anywhere else, but again, that's a special population that is not, we have almost half of the children that are not taking regular eighth-grade math. They're either taking algebra or geometry. And with that as one exception, we continue to perform well above. I would point you to the differences at the state level between how kids are scoring in geometry versus how they're scoring in mathematics. So, the state as an entire group has a much more depressed score in terms of level four and five than the rest of the grade levels throughout the state. One thing that's very important about the change from the NJASK and HESPA to the Park is that we have a new graduation protocol in the state of New Jersey. State law requires that we have a assessment that kids must take in order to graduate. It used to be the HESPA that they had to be proficient, demonstrating their proficiency on one standardized achievement level. Now that we're in a transition process, and this transition will go up to the graduating class of 2019, which are our current freshmen, during that period of time, this is the graduation criteria behind me in terms of what test. So, it's a menu of different options, basically, that kids can take a variety of different tests, and if they demonstrate a certain level of proficiency on these tests, whether it's the Park, whether it's SATs, ACTs, Accuplacer, PSATs, the ASFAB, which is an assessment that is used for armed services recruitment. Any of these assessments could be used in order to satisfy the statutory requirement for a standardized achievement test prior to graduation. As you can see, it's, there's ors in between all this. They don't have to achieve all of these different standards. They just have to achieve one of these standards, either a passing score on the Park, the SAT, the Accuplacer, the PSAT, or the ASFAB in order to graduate. But they have to do one in math, and they have to do one in language arts as well. This is very, very different than what we've had to do in the past. So, what we're doing as a district is we're reflecting upon our data as we begin the analysis of our data. We will disaggregate all of that information based upon the areas that I spoke about before. We'll also take a look at the data analysis tool that will be provided by Pearson to allow us to do item analysis, to cross-check whether or not we need to make adjustments to our curriculum or pacing or other things. If we need to resource or add additional supplies or materials, we will do so. Challenge for us, of course, is that we had students that did not take the assessment, so we have to be very careful about drawing broad conclusions from a limited amount of information. And that concludes our presentation tonight. I'd like to open it up for any questions from the board. Mr. Gillett?
Thank you, Dr. Schiff, for the presentation. So, you mentioned a couple of times tonight in the presentation about the refusal. So, this question isn't really to do with the result, it's more about if we have any indication from the state about will there be an opt-out, not opt-out, refusal process in this school year? Do we know anything about that, if there will be, or if we're going to be more of a mandatory situation, or what are we going to do?
Well, there was legislation that was just recently passed that eliminated the possibility that the state could refuse certain funding to schools for certain percentages of refusals in their district. So, if you may recall, our commissioner indicated last year that due to high levels of refusals or low levels of participation rate, that this could jeopardize certain funding. This legislation hopefully will protect districts from that. Honestly, I think we should encourage people to participate in the assessment itself. I think having more information rather than less information, having information that is valid and reliable is better than not. We will continue our process of providing, you know, quiet space for children who are going to refuse. Hopefully, that will be less. Parents of children who did refuse will receive actually a template of what the results would have looked like, so that they have an opportunity to see what information they could have received if their child took that, with encouragement for them to do so during the 2016 administration. As you can see, in order to graduate, Park is part of that process, and if you're not taking the SATs or your SATs are on the low side, taking the Park may be another good option for students in order to complete the graduation requirements. But I think more importantly, honestly, that it is difficult for us to develop goals, to establish whether or not we need to change curriculum, pacing, even pedagogy, based upon incomplete information specifically at the upper, middle, and high school levels. Any other questions or thoughts? Thank you. That's all I have for that. Now, let me shift gears. I do have a few additional pieces of great news that I'd like to share with the board and the community. I am pleased to announce that Swathy Jayshanker, a Hillsborough High School senior, was recently named as the 2016 National Young Arts Foundation Honorable Mention winner in Dance, World Dance Form's Classical Indian category. As part of this honor, Swathy has the opportunity to apply to participate in the Young Arts Regional Program, which would allow her to practice her dance form with other dancers and professionals. Congratulations to Swathy on her accomplishment. Prior to the Thanksgiving break, Hillsborough Township Public Schools had a very busy theater weekend. During the weekend of November 21st and 22nd, Hillsborough High School Theater presented The Crucible, and the Hillsborough Middle School Drama Club presented The Hobbit. Many, many hours went into the rehearsals, setup, and production of these amazing shows. Congratulations to the students, staff, and parent volunteers who made these shows possible at such a success. I highly recommend that everyone tune in to watch Chopped Junior on the Food Network tomorrow evening to see Otten Road Intermediate School 5th grader Megan Norris compete for a chance to win $10,000. The episode will air tomorrow night at 8:00 PM. On Chopped Junior, young chefs compete against each other, must create a dish and include the ingredients included in their mystery basket in under 30 minutes. Good luck, Megan. We'll be cheering for you. By the way, it's a great show if you've ever had a chance to watch it. Hillsborough Performing Arts staff members Mark Angelone, Nicholas Clipperton, C.G. Coats, Jules Heron, Carrie Lansbury, and Beth Nichols, as well as six Hillsborough alumni and five assistants of the Hillsborough High School Marching Band and Small Ensembles, are members of a prestigious ensemble called the Eastern Wind Symphony. The Eastern Wind Symphony will perform a send-off concert at Hillsborough High School on December 12th at 8:00 PM. Proceeds from this concert will go to help the group's trip to perform at the 69th Annual Midwestern Band and Orchestra Clinic in Chicago. The symphony is the first adult band from New Jersey to ever be invited to perform at this prestigious concert. The Eastern Wind Symphony is a professional ensemble of musicians in the tri-state area. Group members include music educators, freelance musicians, as well as other non-music occupations, all who volunteer their time and enjoy performing at the highest levels. Congratulations on the honor of being chosen to participate at the clinic in Chicago and break a leg, Eastern Wind Symphony. And now, we just received actually this information this morning, some wonderful news. Hillsborough Township Public Schools is one of 425 districts in the United States of America and Canada that was recently honored by the College Boards with placement on the 6th Annual AP District Honor Rolls. To be included in this distinguished group of school district, Hillsborough had to, since 2013, increase access to advanced placement coursework while simultaneously maintaining or increasing the percentage of students' scores at a three or higher on AP exams. The first step to delivering this opportunity of advanced placement to students is providing access by ensuring courses are available, that gatekeeping stops, and that the doors are equitably open so that prepared and motivated students from all backgrounds can participate. Inclusion in the 6th Annual AP District Honor Roll is based on the examination of three years' worth of AP data from 2013 through 2015, looking across 34 AP examinations, including world languages and cultures. Congratulations to the students, staff, and administration on this wonderful honor.
Thank you for all the great news, Dr. Schiff. Okay, on to... Okay, on to the approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the November 23rd, 2015 regular meeting minutes, please? Second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please, Ms... Oh, any abstentions? No? We're good?
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mahmood.
Thank you.
Okay, on to committee reports. I'm not sure how many we have this evening, so, um, don't we have any, right?
Negotiations, negotiations met, but we don't usually report that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, right now, I'm going to open up the floor to the public for input specifically on the 2016, 2017 budget. If you have any comments to make about that at this moment, you can go to the microphone, state your name and address. Okay, seeing none. Going to keep the floor open now. Two comments from the general public on new business, please. Again, same rules apply. If you have any new business for the Board of Education, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. No? All right, wow. Feeling, feeling confident tonight. Now, on to comments from the public on the action agenda. Do we have any comments from the public on the action agenda? No? Okay. It's a unique evening. So, we are going to move on to comments from the board on the action agenda. Actually, we're just going to take that as we go through. So, Dr. Schiff, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I make under the area of education, to approve professional travel-related expenses, family math and science sessions, the writing of the social studies curriculum, the overnight trip to Cornell University, approval of math textbooks, the HIB, and the HIB, and the HIB investigation list.
May I have a motion to approve items A1 through A6 on the action agenda, please? May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Sure. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm making under the area of human resources, to approve the retirements of one of our custodians, Hu Yan Dietrich, who's been, who has worked with us since 2003, and we appreciate this custodian's contributions to our district. Also, to approve the contract changes, leaves of absences, the appointments of a teacher, long-term sub. We also have another long-term substitute that's on the addendum, which I draw your attention to. This is for a school athletic trainer. It is numbered B-4.2.5, as well as instructional assistants, coach, intermediary advisor, substitutes, student-teacher, six-period coverage, extra-period coverage.
May I have a motion to approve items B1 through B7 with the addition of the addendum of B-4.2.5, please? May I get a second? Okay. Roll, roll call, please. Actually, you know what? I need to separate out one item. I'd like to separate out B-4.2.4. So, we are going to be approving B1?
All but.
All but. So, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
May I have a motion to approve item B dot, B-4.2.4? May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to open up the floor to the public on comments for any old business. Do we have any comments from the public on old business at this time? Since no one is making a bee line for the microphone, I'm going to take that as a no. Um, do we have any comments from the board on any old business at this time? Does everybody want to watch the Cowboys Redskins game tonight or something? I don't know. So, well, thank you. And just to make note, we have informational information on enrollment for our crisis drills and suspensions on there. And right now, I guess we're going to call for adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.